This meeting of December 18, 2019 is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law and was included in a list of meetings' notice transmitted to the two river times in Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building on December 16, 2019. The meeting notices remain continuously posted as the required notices under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Official action may be taken at this meeting. Proper notice having been given, the municipal clerk is directed with the statement of the meeting. Paul Rice for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Raswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruyon.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola. Council President Ryan. Mayor O'Neill.
Yes.
All present. All in favor? The motion is motioned into its own one. This meeting of December 18, 2019 is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law and was included in a list of meetings' notice transmitted to the two river times in the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building on December 16, 2019. The meeting notices remain continuously posted as the required notices under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Official action may be taken at this meeting. Paul Rice for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now call the roll. Councilmember Raswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruyon.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor O'Neill.
Yes.
All present at the form of form.
From the Borough of Highlands County in Monmouth. A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, to push and trust decisions and the compassion to witness the need of the body. He does not set out to be a leader, but he becomes one by the quality and factions and the integrity of the country. With sincere gratitude and appreciation to the Arrowhead Richard Gregory O'Neill for your many years of service to the Borough of Highlands, councilmember from nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and ten, and two thousand and twelve, Mayor Vincent R. Ryan, two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, and two thousand and nineteen. Thank you from the council and staff of the Borough of Highlands.
Hear her. Then it wouldn't. Be the same.
Our family family, we're not the same as the five men that we call dads, husbands, sons, brothers, and moms and friends. They're dedicated members of the Highlands family, the last of thousands of us here. His continued effort and fierce loyalty to all facets of his mishaps, including first aid volunteer, captain, mayor, and town resident, have always been an example in the pride of the Southland. I feel unfair to say that no one knows better than Stanley as to what exactly was in the title of each one of those positions. Whether it be meals missed with first aid calls, countless hours dedicated to contesting other town events, first aid keeps constant ways hard to compensate. His kind of family and friends still around, believing he's preparing for the next one, zoning, branding, et cetera. I believe there's no surest statement that you can't make everyone happy. And I know I myself, as well as my family, can attest to that facet of this position. As I said, I myself, as well as my mother and siblings, have no shortage of stories about the last giving to some political decisions we've worked for years. However, as my father would say, this is not a job he took on because of his duty. He was taken on because of his passion for the county moments and the county growing. My father has always led the research, knowledge, and experience, as well as heart, to ensure the best decision will be all members of the community and for that, every one of us should be grateful. Although, for him, I'm sure this transition of the bittersweet leaves the family a truly honor to every part of his time and sacrifice and will forever remember the pride and the thanks for his experience for all these years. We love you and look forward to sharing that journey. That's all I'll say about that.
Next on the agenda, we have the public hearing final reading and adoption of order N. 19-24, an order to amend in Chapter nine of the Borough of Highlands Municipal Code relating to sewer fees.
The change clarifies responsibility for homeowners as to sewer. It's been updated to reflect that it's known to be brought in the lateral of their building up until the connection point. This was worked on with your borough engineer. It will create a more consistent avenue for determining who is responsible for sewer repairs. With respect to fees, it's really about the road opening permit. If you have to open the street, you just refer to that section of code. That's really a piece that's just a power side responsibility to all the citizens. Any responsibility.
Do I have an introduction?
On second.
Introduction by Mayor O'Neill, second by Councilmember Bruyon. I will now call the roll. Councilmember Raswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruyon.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor O'Neill. All in favor of the order and suspends. Next, we have a old business, a resolution authorizing a place-to-place transfer extension of premises of a liquor license. Okay. Councilmember Raswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruyon.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor O'Neill.
Yes.
All in favor, so ordered is tabled to, we're going to table it to the fifteenth of January? Oh, indefinitely, gotcha. Next, we have the consent agenda. So, Mayor, would you like me to read the consent agenda correctly? First, we have R. 19-287, a resolution authorizing payment of bills list. Second, we have R. 19-288, the resolution authorizing the return of escrow funds to Prime State Bank. Next, we have Resolution R. 19-289, a resolution certifying improving 2018 low stat contributions. Those are length of service award programs required. Next, we have Resolution R. 19-290, a resolution authorizing the return of tax over payments. Next, we have Resolution R. 19-291, a resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement with the Monmouth County Board of Health for Health Services. Next, we have R. 19-292, a resolution authorizing the renewal of a shared services contract between the Borough of Highlands and the township of Middletown for animal patrol service. Next, we have Resolution R. 19-293, a resolution authorizing the advertising of a bid for the bulkhead for Jones Creek and Cedar Street. Next, we have R. 19-294, a resolution authorizing a change order declaring acceptance of contract for the grant for concrete improvements. Next, we have Resolution R. 19-295, a resolution appointing a part-time recreation coordinator. Next, we have Resolution R. 19-296, a resolution appointing a full-time recreation coordinator. Number eleven is R. 19-297, a resolution authorizing the trade-in of Borough Quick. Next, we have, in the final, is a resolution, R. 19-298, a resolution approving a budget transfer. But second, a motion to remove R. 19-290. The motion is rescinded by the gentleman and
The plans in place are substantial right now for the all-in replacements outside of Jones Creek and Cedar Street. I'll start with the foot district to Cedar Street. First, say Cedar Street, I'm sorry. That's the easier one. Current condition, it's failing timber bulkhead with these piles and a drag pile and tie rod system. If you remember earlier, I guess it was twenty and two, we replaced the slums were right penetration through that wall, through that existing sewer bulkhead. If we haven't figured what it's probably contaminated the sheeting back together with some marine block. Temporary connection will stop this oil coming through behind you. What we propose at this point at that wall is what you can see, that traditional steel pile steel sheet system. Airlock steel sheets, what we're going to specify for the public should be pulled ahead of the product. It is a Skyline product, per people. It's NC fourteen machine five. A proxy is actually the top of wall where it is now to tie into the median dock over at the plant plant. And what we see is a timber cap on top of that. So, not much of the wall is exposed from the upper inside, but you see, it's just a pad component. I'm going to look to push that up a little bit more if you can for some better flood protection in the future. She's also the replacement, the replacement elevated. We'll reinstall the ductile pipe penetration and make the pipe flush that out on it. At this point, we put that back in. As of yet, to make sure that it's not much higher than the front view. As of right now, I have the path rounded up to the next gap for example. I did sort of play these nicely with the plant plant. But what it can do, and see come off another quarter or so, just to give you some additional protection, is not that doing anything in short term as the adjacent wall and above. Their ties are come right through the plant for the future. Of course, they're large, but not a breach there. That was a breach in saving. But some of it to the top of all, on the front is approximately elevation six. But it is six. So, it really won't change the sheet specification. We may want to validate you to a material that works well based on our geotechnical boring and stuff. So, we'll look to bring that up to the margin, the margin in order to protect the future. So, talking about the wall over here, originally you were concerned with the soil being not really working well with the traditional sheet pile wall. But the boring results came back really good. We have nice immediate fence, sand, sand and cement. So, not a lot of large aggregate. My geotech department structural engineers were able to specify same type of sheet, just keep that process and do the thirty-eight inch sheet pile. Similar to what you see at the wall further waterward and tiny rotation. What I want to do in addition to it, because we're seeing some failure at new title zone and splash coating, I'm making two proposed improvements to the wall section that we see now. The first one being the next tier protection and upgrading coating system on the two-part coat. Rather than it's the traditional cold dark epoxy that's where it's stated on it generally specifies for what marine and lines. I've had some success when it comes to success. It's a hollowed-in product, it's a finer base, and traditional top coat. So, a beefed-up coating specification for this wall and as well as a concrete casing on the outer portion. So, you won't see the actual on the sheets once it's completed, it's going to be case, the concrete from the top of the wall down to pretty below the mud line itself. So, that thickens up and it provides an extra layer of erosion protection for the head wall itself. Pipe-wise, as we talked about previously in this room, the steel wall out there today, top wall is approximately elevation ten point five. And then the timber bulkhead along Jones Creek is about seven point three. So, you have a jump, you have a gap there. What we're proposing for the new wall at the end of Jones Creek would be set the top of the steel to elevation ten point five and with concrete casing, not for that to elevation less. So, we've got a nice continued base top wall elevation, elevated from the current condition, but only due to steel we have out there. The wet wall, correct, correct. So, the wall will come across the Jones Creek, add that constant elevation up to eleven point zero and then take her down to meet beach on one wall on each side. The dash ring bridge, we're proposing to separate from the wall itself and not sit it on the wall. What we're proposing is a very typical timber lining dash ring bridge, but I'm proposing to set the decking elevation at eleven point five, which matches the top of the steel wall. What that does is it allows for two-by-six decking, and two-by-ten shredders, and three-by-ten girders all to exist above, comfortably above, the timber bulkhead that we have right now on Jones Creek. So, while you're here with the Disney bulkhead, it'll allow for future elevation of that wall. And missing, the wall of to get down to these desirable strata, the sheets are forty-two feet, forty-two feet. So, the bottom of the elevation is negative thirty-two. And once it's flooded, it's a very dense sand silage mix with low count of like fifty to sixty. It's real difficult to tear it down. Especially one of them. That material and the wall itself, the sheet itself, it does not allow well, the sheet is a commodity, but the strata, I think, would just more to handle around. But just, the ground water movement and material, it is a finer material, a more dense material, but there's no other structure in there that's down that deep. So, the timber sheeting that's there now, timber sheeting on either side of Jones Creek, because it's supported by these piles, that sheeting I would guess is definitely where the mice are going to be. So, you know, the movement around the ground water is not going to make any difference. It's not going to be intacty and dead that at all. There's other reader links around it at this point. But if it was all to be turned into a depth backbeat where it's a nice material that really links it well. So, you're not going to need to worry about breaking one of them. You build a wall. Correct. So, right now, there's a forty-inch open with, you know, flap out out there today. It's one of the more, it's an older design that it's planned perfectly vertically. Designed to be more vertical. The newer flat valves, you gotta check that high, are set at certain angles on the plant. If you see, what I'm proposing is a heavy cast iron, three-inch valve, flat valve itself set at an angle so the weed, I think, is going to be enclosed. It's double use and it's going to require some maintenance in order to really lock down and be water tight. And what kind of maintenance? The hinges themselves are that can inspect the roots periodically. And then really, the other maintenance component of the platform, the flap valve, is the active gasket. So, there's a very high-dense plastic gasket that creates the seal itself. So, over time, and based on the dam opening and closing, how hard it closes, if there was a storm condition, that gasket itself can be conformed over time. But the fact that he isn't advanced yet, you can find coating and that's it. This allows structurally part of the bulkhead or is it separate texture that you would be removed and must prepare or it's on a ductal link, right? So, that's a very different idea. Every design is constantly what's going to happen in the future and will need for modification. So, cement on a ductal line, pipe penetrating the wall itself, the case of the concrete, and what we're calling for flange changes, so mechanical joint flange and head. So, that has to use the mechanical stacking to wrap that up to the middle wall penetration is by flange fitting itself. It could get murdered to be examined to be a path over a long time in the future. So, the flames on both sides, so you want to go with the valve on the backside.
So, you could put everything off, you don't want us to do it for
Yeah, the flames fit from the inside, look, this was
And this, this is a ductal, are you there for me?
Correct. Forty-eight inch ductal. The whole problem is the fact that this is a removable valve. It needs to possibly help, it's a good I'm not a fan of no
Exactly, it will last for a period of fifty minutes. Yes. My preference, my preference is to have dual valves, so whatever, so the high tide never infiltrates Jones Creek. And that means that you're happy with a pump there. But a pump that ultimately would be used, that certainly has been drained in the area. If you have a happens to rain in, in, say, a hundred of an hour, Jones Creek will not contain it all. So, if you have that rain very high tide, you're just kind of
I don't think the others are appropriate. Be my chat and sort of Oh, and, oh, and I think we do some plans that have been on for potentially pumping more valves Jones Creek. Top of wall elevation, top of wall. The top of the proposal is not in the game, it's very nicely, we go with that plan. But when it comes up, however, the light getting in the valley should come the length well, it comes up, you know, it's lifted over that wall, right then destroyed by whatever you have. These plans, the plans would work complementing to each other. If that was the way to pump in the future. There was something else. Maybe later on, we could burn up ductal pipe after you get to the so many places, we could study here, cover that, and then get over and pull the teeth to flame. But right now, we got to stop.
Everybody all right?
Yes.
Councilmember Raswell, do you still want to remove P. 93? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do I have a second? Councilmember Raswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruyon. Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor O'Neill. So ordered. Consent agenda passes. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes from the meeting of October 16, 2019. We can approve all of these at once if you prefer.
Yes.
We have approval of minutes for November 13, 2019, approval of minutes for December 4, 2019. Are there any changes to the minutes? I received one from Councilmember Bruyon earlier. I made the correction, and we emailed out the corrected copy. Are there any other changes in any way? So, yeah, everybody did it.
I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Brazel? Councilmember Breon?
Yes.
Councilmember Mizzola?
Yes.
Council President Ryan?
Yeah.
Mayor O'Neill? So order the minutes are approved. Uh, next, we have other business, uh, twenty-twenty Barrow calendar events, and turn this over to Mr. Mizzola to, to explain it.
So, as of right now, this is thirty, twenty events that I have, um, not including all the recreation events, but such as, I, um, different concerts that they might want to run, or anything fresh. Uh, these continued events that we have last year, probably more, particularly for more addition to it. So for March, we have an Irish music event. Um, we have last year, uh, a live band playing, um, traditional Irish music. Came in and we offered one of those kind of things. Uh, with, I think, difficult for like a story to bring in, that we have, the Easter night concert, um, in May, is the Park Fact, where in different parks in Barrow, um, musicians are playing, um, I have to say, last year, uh, the Calcrant All Records, um, for some time. Um, the event itself cost about, um, eleven hundred dollars total. They have, um, three different concert venues on, almost the entire day. Uh, we, in each park, we had, um, the High Park, it was physical fitness and yoga. In, uh, Cornwell, it was, uh, chess, um, it was teaching children and adults play chess, and just, uh, students were going home. And then over in Bedford Park, there was, uh, Art of Play, art show, uh, Art of Sound by Little Fender, and the main band, uh, was playing on that beach. And each, each venue had about two hours worth of music going. Um, so we play on very bad events, there's, there's, it's like four minutes. Um, in June, it's the Highland Bonfire, that's a great time to open up, be friends. Um, in July, uh, the community center, court leaders, had come up with a Christmas at July event, that they played, and have more information on that, we'll come. In August, is the Highland Beach Party, where we had the Beach Day Con, and had a beach party on the beach. Um, that event had cost us two hundred dollars, um, for that event last year, and there were a lot of attendees, and it was amazing. Um, in September, we have Highland Day. There are bands, local bands that play there, uh, we have different vendors come, and have a bonfire on that thing as well. Um, in October, they were playing through the Highland Song Festival, like we had, um, that was a really nice event. Uh, the local filmmakers had, um, submitted some relevant films, um, in, actually, the community center, it was great. Uh, in December, uh, will be the Burnley Tree Center. Um, those are two dates, the different events that we have, um, that my office is currently planning. And, uh, for these events, last, this current year, in twenty nineteen, it cost about a total of, um, eleven hundred dollars. Um, then we also have the Veterans Park Concert. Um, they, they are on Thursdays, we try to book on every other Thursday, every Thursday, every ten. Um, those bands charge usually between two and four hundred dollars. Uh, the bigger bands that we have were playing, were, they also were local, uh, musicians, local bands, uh, one was called Entree, that was Mark and Sheever. Um, and I thought I had really sort of a varied calendar for this time.
Is this still time to put it on?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to go through with, uh, through the, yeah. Well, can I, this is a company, concerts, people that, right? Um, I actually, we actually are, are seeing this in seven. Before it originally, I could hear, and I, or so, I would, I would, seven o'clock, so our client.
Seven-five, it's, it doesn't get down here in time to see it.
And, and, and I also want to bring up some info, recently, yeah, uh, concerts last summer, and a lot of people that, um, that, um, were first starting, and different events, it's, and the folk who used to, you know, attend those, um, concerts, have been, have been, uh, it was a nice turnout for you, and, even, mostly on the beach, I have to tell you, I thought, I'm going to, certainly talk to one woman, she was my sister-in-law, I think, so. It's, oh, they're looking at it next, it's great, and, yeah. Yeah, it was a nice turnout for this movie, yeah, it was, it was a good, and actually, my, my children, I don't know if I'm, but my children, it's music, come here with people, they need us here, and want.
You work that out?
Yeah.
I, I have a question, I'm not, music, that's, asking, all, uh, but, I don't know, well, you, and, and all the different departments, with, um, recreation, with, um, businesses, with, uh, and, and Arts Council, obviously, and with all of these community events, so just, we're all coming together. And, um, a lot of this work has been done by Miranda, and she's been doing an amazing job, and we're all together, and all in one, it's really short, that, right now, that, you know, these events are, you know, happening on the same day, and, you know, the best that can be done, um, just so that people can go through.
Great, thanks.
It's like hyper organ, is bringing this all together, so, the other, uh, practice, about providing something for the people in town to do, for the homeowners, the, the, the.
Whoever did that puts a client in the business, that's a win, right there, they're not, one of the, eight people, or islands, communication, and, and, all the people in the industry. All right. Any goodness, things out? Okay. Just roll monitor, do you have everything going? I'm gonna be good. Very great, okay, I'm actually, I'm actually, uh, um, but, for you.
I have a bubble wrap there.
We did, we did, we did, so, uh, or, or, uh, we started, they did, uh, Pontius, and, 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 Grand Tour, and, and, short second, this year. Um, what we're looking at, since our, since the last time I was here, um, musical park in lock, um, sorry. They've got the recommendation, we're, of the works director, in fact, they're having a way to utilize, or, you know, staff, um, performing some of the construction on site. So what, what we're doing now is, um, looking at the proposed concept, and figuring out what can be done in house, and what would have to still be done by an outside contractor, and we're putting numbers together. And it looks like, um, my, through the labor, it's like, there's some potential for significant cost savings, about twenty-five percent, this time, uh, with my rough numbers, you know, to have some of the work done, even now. We'll, I'll continue to work on that, and if it makes sense to go that route, rather than, yeah, for traditional public, if they're all work, um, we'll, we'll, I'll, I'll work, we, we, I'll work to advance the, um, concept, and, 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 uh, people, and, and, whatever.
Well, what we're looking to do is, uh, roll monitor, set up a base, take ready, set space, and, uh, uh, you can, you can, you can, you can, no, no, you can, you can, grade those pages, and, uh, for, hey,
State that the based on the the time of the construction for previous improvement of building in the parking lot, uh the new parking, when you take into account the law for the this previous parking, it doesn't trigger any of the capital term, so it's all going along, uh it's one more negative decision, I guess, so obviously we we address the runoff and the way to do it in concentrated flow, change the both items and look at uh people trying to recharge and improve warrant followings as a possible, but um it is a little more flexibility in timing and means of that, your your work can also do some of those um maybe some of the green infrastructure to address the uh you know, stormwater runoff in the house, as well as uh we can discuss uh give these guys putting in um time with light and electric or or anything else that requires some sort of two mark in use, so there is plenty of time. You could, uh well, the concept of this pitable tech area, area that floor, you need some kind of stuff there. Right, we were we were essentially just talking amongst ourselves, and obviously we'll be a group decision ultimately, um you want some some lighting that's similar to the light you see on Bay Avenue, some some lower light fixtures, like fourteen sixteen foot by the uh down center, or you work on the typical heavy shoebox, if you put them on the outside, you have the light, it gets even more advanced in the site. You've got to keep in mind that the proximity residence, I guess, that could have been the residential, you don't like fall off, you say, I'm holding you in mind with the law. And sometimes you hear control, like putting on the outside, directly in, and then we'll have to come up with a solution, like a control system or a time for to be able to control or actual get everything back, something you should know. But that that can be done in the future, right? You want a condo or? You're not, you're not condo, no. I think you have to run condo. Actually, um, what about you, do you remember? Uh, okay, uh, okay, question. The the other question was, uh, you did, we need a place to sit.
Yeah.
I think they got a, that's all.
Right. Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cool. Anything else?
Uh, I I don't know if it was reported, I don't know the last name, but the first year, twenty twenty, eighteen years, forty grand, or maybe the four thousand, or the focus came out, so I haven't seen that from my, I think.
Uh, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, I stand with you personally, through college, uh, in terms of course, um, forums that I was, uh, personal, uh, parking and parking lot, there's resolutions, um, you know, for the public here, uh, and uh, very, very simply put, and develop, uh, markets or something or other, and other projects to probably resolve some of that further in our court, test practices for pilot reviews, finding words, emerging issues, and social media, and over emphasize the um, the having the handbook for social media, only certain people should be on social media. I myself am guilty of this because I have many, many social media sites with my name on it, but it's like, even if it's a personal, and I have something about one of the new qualities on it, they they link the two together, so we need to be very, very careful about that. Social media, uh, there's a whole plethora of lawsuits taking place around tourism where people are suing, uh, because towns providing, uh, posts, people reading posts, uh, they have programs out there where people take snapshots, there are companies now that will actually, uh, back up all of your social media's habit because it's all over the request. It's all, it's all, all, so the laws are gonna be changing in the next eighteen months or so, so um, there's a whole education process that needs to take place. I do have names of of the person who'll come into a presentation, education meeting, because I think that's where we need to start. I have to be highly spread because I think I'd want to know if you're meeting, that communication committee was like right on point, right about getting the message out there, and I think we started with that, and we looked at all of the necessary departments, and then we're accordingly, myself included, uh, we need to be very, very careful how we post things and share things on our personal accounts for this because of all links together, and 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 laws do not separate, so we need to be careful how we do that. Um, I'll follow up with that. Using innovation.
Do you want to do a webinar?
I can make, I can make, I'm sure, I'll do that information, absolutely. Um, uh, using innovation to revive abandoned buildings, the abandoned buildings we have here are mostly homeless, this is what for commercial property, and that's putting the roads up and stuff like that. Who has been here, let's still learn some education. Uh, it it's also part of our court enforcement, court enforcement is really the key to commercial properties because it's no business unless you're the gang, uh, once they tag it, and they don't take it down, it's like a law, you know, go to those events, and we watch the territory, and they just keep going back. So no matter what the cost is, if you've got those type of issues, you can totally be on top of that. That was a lesson there. I think with um, treated for parking, uh, parking meters, um, keep an eye on his smoke, and he's got some lurch too, if you go down that path, we do the peril. Uh, there are some real, real smart things out there, so we've got the kiosk version, we've got a texting version now, and you've got um, uh, another company that's willing to do decks, and they'll build the deck for, uh, you know, your own details, and you do research, but if you want a parking, that thing will actually get built a parking that you do is turn the land over to the first period client, you share some of that revenue stream for a better period of time, is, and then just go back, and you actually own it. So those those programs are after as well. Um, there's intelligent meters now, where you don't even necessarily have to have a meter, what you do is they put a, a number or a QR code in that area, you have to queue, you can just go to your phone and and do it, I don't know what technology that, but that's.
Aspirant.
So we're gonna, right, and you can, you can, the thing about this intelligent parking meters is, you don't have to have that meter, it's supposed to be higher time, you can pick and choose the times you wanna have that meter, and depending on, depending on what the ordinance says, you can actually have different keys for different, different things. So if you have an event, and you want to show a certain fee, you can adjust it, this is all, there's all types of, you know, regulations and things that you have to do as a borough in in the ordinance, but that's available as well. You don't have to have parking meters twenty-four seven, you wanna say, I show Boulevard on Monday through Friday, it's this, and it's this rate. Um, there's also, um, one of the vendors I spoke to, I thought this was very interesting because of my opinion, C Street, is is they can actually get a code from C Street, so I'm making this up now, let's say they got a monthly figure from C Street, they can include their parking in that, so at least we're getting a revenue stream from that, and it would be this counter rate again, deciding on these meters, how you want it to happen. So it, it, I was just amazed with that, I mean, this is incredible. So again, Chief Burke and I, um, will share that information, go and take down, take down that path, and and make direct innovation, that's what everybody wants to do. Uh, but it was really amazing. Uh, redevelopment plan updates, uh, Shadow Montefiore Park, I spoke to Mr. Schlepper, um, that's going along, he's passed through notice period, he's telling me this is gonna happen, he's already won a half a million dollars, uh, for the pound payment, and he's also started with professionals. Uh, he'll be ready, probably do a presentation to whatever group we want to do, with the sort of the economic committee, or whatever you wanna do, he'll be ready, uh, with a concept to present to us at the end of January, going February, and I'll stay on top of it with that, and we can decide, uh, who is gonna be the holder there, to to shake some of the things out before the actual public. Um, hope on the bank, uh, Mr. Green, uh, I'm sorry, way back up, I apologize. PRC, by the way, is the backup developer, something worth calling out there, it's a real backup developer in both of our, both of our current development areas. Uh, Saxon Enterprises.
I have a question. PRC, is that a developer that needs to put a point to the table?
Ah, yes, it is.
So, so that's someone that you'd work to be on your channel on?
That's right, and this person is actually back, like, with Kim and I on two occasions, I don't know, two, four, I don't know, they lost the contact with some of the establishments that we may be doing, if they fit into that, so.
Have they been, have they been offered?
No, no. Um, Saxon Enterprises is another, another company they bought in, that's a company they worked with right down in Keefur, they're the backup for Hope on the Bank, they're the ones that do Old Ashbury Park, they did Austin, Texas, uh, and they did Jersey City, uh, so that's a backup on the Marine, and they're very, they're very, very, very aggressive, and these are people that could just step right in if somebody were behind them.
And that is, again, is that somebody that you?
That's somebody that I bought in.
And have they taken a look at the area?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're, they're taking into account, I'm looking at, for full transparency, Saxon, they're a redeveloper in Keefur, uh, they don't, they probably, they're gonna be developing all of them, just for public with it, they're gonna be developing all of the quality of each way, uh, major, major, it's a different type of company.
What you think about these companies when they come in, they're the ones that do everything on the park, the Ashbury Park on the one side, equipment, which is distillery, uh, the the signed back building, six eight buildings, now, what they do when they develop, is they will actually see their buildings with the smoking issues, they will put a business in at everyone's expense, to get a dollar, and then they bring other people in, and they'll spin wherever they put in, so it's totally different type of philosophy, that's not necessarily what we did here, because we can't remember about the Marine and all that, but their mentality is, is neighborhood, community, uh, that type of stuff, it's a totally, totally competitive development. Um, uh, back to Hope on the Bank, he's based too, the environmental review, so once it puts out the second phase of environmental review, he'll get a purchase of property, uh, he'll do that, he'll perfect that as soon as it happens, he'll force it to property, uh, and we, we need to start the ball rolling down, like the contract with redevelopment and everything. That's gonna probably move very quickly, he's another developer that just wants to get it done, uh, and he's only just starting to start work, at least on renovation problem, okay, and stuff like that, right away, and then working from this. Um, that's it on redevelopment, so then we have Hope in there in play, and we have backup Hope on the Bank. On uh, Bay Avenue, we have sixteen properties, they're in the stages of redevelopment, of those sixteen properties, we're impacting them, we're behind some other properties, um, and we've had some basic discussion of whether or not, and talking about me as a, as a consultant, I as an employee, and I as a representative of the borough, and maybe considering, uh, making a redevelopment area, so that they have more consult, because we're going up and down to do product, we'll discuss that, and we're gonna get it, the economic development committee. Uh, I listed here the properties that, uh, buy, buy, uh, development, so you can see both the properties, there's a warehouse, we've got other pieces of property, we've got a company that's bought, we've been in under, um, in negotiation with Mike Dallas, it's another piece of land on Bay Avenue. Also on there, Enterprises, uh, they have one twenty-eight bank, that's gonna open a European style cafe restaurant, I spoke about that last one, that's gonna be open sometime, you know, spring. One eighty-one Bay Avenue, which is a trip, that's a forming, certain things, very good uh, happening, there's a package with church pipes set up, or you've got something, you actually, uh, something there at the church, so that'll change down the road, so, two of the dollars takes place, um, in the north, exactly the same area, they want to make some, that's a good pilot, that's a big building, a big project, so. Partly, we're lucky that they're going to hold on to that property, use it so we can do something, and then we'll, we'll something for bigger pictures, in case it starts happening, so we're lucky to have to do the work. Um, uh, ninety, uh, ninety-five, ninety-nine Bay Avenue, uh, showing you, he had an issue, his issue was, he's turned out straight, uh, he has to be thirty, thirty, uh, copies to plan, that was all, um, I've been involved with T and M, and they're working on those those issues, he had incomplete, but it's all they have worked through now, so, uh, I talked to him, we're okay, he's, he's back on, I'm gonna get it done, uh, because it's been a lot of frustration over the years and stuff, so I'll ask the intermediary to help with that. Um, then there was, uh, or this one?
No.
No?
No, no, we're meeting towards.
Okay, meeting for it, I met with one, uh. Yeah, I did, it was all, yeah, on Bay Avenue, I apologize, if we go back to Bay Avenue, uh, the park, I listed all of the properties, I'm not gonna fall in our proposal for the property right now, to be put in the states. And by that, I mean, they wanna know what is, what is, what are they able to do there? Mostly tell what they're able to do, and struggle, struggle with some of the stuff. Um, meeting for it, I met with one, uh, Shadow Penny Camp, uh, they need to go to the county because of, before getting a contract, because what they wanna do is they wanna be a shop in Nussel, and basically Atlantic Highlands, uh, places to motorize, motorize, kick, to motorize for the Hudson Trail. Um, I talked to, um, three holders, I know about it, and he gave these, maybe they're supposed to speak to them, you know, maybe they'll allow, they'll put a dollar or something like that, but I don't know if that's gonna apply or not, because I've been very, very cautious of how I approach him, but I'm pretty quick back to some of the county, uh, I I just wonder if it wouldn't be, more, more of a concern with it. Um, Mike, from BLT, I met with, uh, Houston Musuka two weeks ago, uh, he was buying two point two Bay Avenue, uh, submitted a concept drawing to, uh, Kim and I, uh, basically, he was gonna do two condo units and apartments, uh, he's gonna have one on the inside, that fell through, um, in terms of seller, uh, I was notified of that, and they've already contacted the developers, wonderful, which is already, is already talking to negotiate, um, and I have two other people, so the three people right now, that property, again, I believe, will be part of all the development there, because things are starting to move along very, very quickly now, it's just like anything else, it's a snowball that, people are here, and things are happening, people are, we're at the point now where developers are actually calling me about Highlands, that's a good position to be in, that's a good position to be in, and I'll talk about that further down, we gotta, we gotta, I apologize. Bay Shore twenty twenty, the BLT is still on target to do some sort of studying with all of the traffic lights, we might get one, take a look at, and I apologize, but on the day of the street, uh, we actually talked about taking some of the, um, I think it's okay with the police department, obviously, uh, it's a state island, we can take some of the sheltering, at certain hours of the day, or certain months of the year, don't allow that to get furthered, so we're gonna, we're gonna look at that. We don't know if the wind of the Highlands, all discussion, that, even coming out here to say it, the point that I'm trying to make is, we're trying to follow, how do we, how do we take care of the traffic, traffic problems, number one, number two, how do we get people off the highway, you know, to defend, to support? Uh, towards the meeting, I was in the fourth, uh, course, is, two thousand nineteen was the best year on record for Long Island County, uh, however, uh, the county is aware that it's not because of the Bay Shore, and that's why we're gonna purchase, uh, the next year of Bay Shore twenty twenty, getting the Bay Shore town, part of the marketing plan, we need people to know that we are one day destinations, when it's raining outside, and you're down, you mix up yourself, you can come up these towns, this town's got the light, you've got all these historic, you've got all these great restaurants, you've got all these weather, and capitalized on that. Pretty much historical society, um, I spoke to Jeff Tyler, who's the president, on Monday, uh, he's setting up a meeting, uh, and we're gonna actually have a meeting, but the people have the trees, that has a positive review. Yeah, so, so that's gonna happen, he's gonna go to that meeting, um, uh, he's gonna talk in the first, and once he talks to them, uh, so they'll, they'll know what's happening, with that, they're gonna report back to the faculty, that meeting. Um, super just in, uh, future developers, one is hand up, and one is for thousands, they've actually contacted me, and I'll probably do a bit for with them, I'm not gonna do it for, but we actually know, I wanna know what's happening with somebody else's property before we do it, because it's just money's reward, if you've got people talking to property buyers now, don't bring somebody in because of the condition, so I do have them, as a stake, the occasion with them, or I see things that are materialized, I'll bring them forward. Uh, we talked about, uh, the economic development, I just pulled four bullet points, this is not any order of priority, so when we actually have, start, start having meetings, I think these are the things that we need to happen, uh, the first thing that I apologize, we need to have a meeting once we decide what we're gonna be doing on Bay Avenue, how we deal with these developers, because what's happening right now is we've got developers fired up, they wanna do things, and they're waiting for us to tell them what they can do, and what's gonna happen is we're gonna lose that momentum, and unfortunately with developers, is when they have money, and they wanna do something, if something else comes along, and we didn't tell them what to do, they, they shift where they're gonna, where they're gonna put their resources, so, for me, that's key, that we decide what, what we're gonna do with that, um, early in the year, so we get that, that word out there, and again, once this stuff kicks off, we're gonna have more and more developers wanting to do it now. So when there's one base code, we're gonna have a redevelopment plan in the current zone, I think that's where we need to start. Parking, I talked to you about, because there's something that's gotta go, uh, everyone will tell you, this is a whole, it's like an hour gap, you can do all of the development you want, don't address the parking, it doesn't really matter, you're just taking the can down the road, and sometimes it's better to take a piece of land than what you wanna do or not, is to do downtown, but thanks to you right now, you gotta put a parking debt, don't wait twenty years to put the parking debt, make a part of your plan as you know, when I do, talk about that, it's been there as well. And I think we also need to create a task list, and I'll take charge on this, we need to develop a task list, because some of the developments that we take in place here are single stop, and some of it's gonna be a greater magnitude, but right now, there needs to be a path, when somebody comes, they know, this is what I need to do, this is what I need to contact, and stuff like that. Right now, if you're the first, we'll close that fine, because like, listen, you come to me, I can double call and do whatever I need to do. Um, but we need to, we need to develop those first, so I think I'll be working with other departments, I'm, I'm gonna probably have to make contact, and make up a couple land use board meetings, find that work, there needs a lot of these to do for them, if I can eliminate an obstacle or a problem with something along the way, I think that's what we're actually gonna do, we wanna make it easy for somebody coming, and watching the videos, and get the, it doesn't matter. I'll start this, this one.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
You can't copy your, 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 your.
And we want to, yeah, I was, I was going.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to, uh, the Green team got Bron certified, and your Cody, and your team, they're laying their ass down, they're very hard to certify, but you don't have a, but, but.
I have to say, Cody's really worked many, many, many hours to get this done, and thank you.
Okay, you now come from your neighbor here.
Oh, my God. Or it'd be like, I'm like, they have their ice cream, that's like, I don't know, it's hard, and I just make a drink, yeah, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, that's all I got.
That's one of them.
Sure, I think, I think it's a short time. Um, I wanna thank Mayor Neil for all his service to mention the last three, I was like, every night since twenty one, two thousand sixteen, but he's definitely the person that's been with me these last three years, and comes on my part, first law in action, and when we get game out. Hold really help, on standard ground, is more to that amount than the past, and anybody should know it's me, and I'm helping you see, and then one time, but I care, but it's a lot.
I use like, funny one.
Um, I would thank you for all the progress we've made, we're starting for the funding Asian projects, and while we're on the floor, and I will never knock, but, I'm not, it's capable of starting rare, and it's not a difficult one, and I don't think these projects were possible without you and the economics, thank you for pointing out her general agenda, her knowledge and navigation for grant programs, priceless, to examine this mall, financial firms will do large projects, and will be compact on the shoulders of this very small capacity. And I'm happy you're open to putting you in the year firm, I'm so busy with the projects coming in on time and under budget, never feel I see the day, again, this is important, actually, my costs is one of, tax dollars down, and my last question certainly, and you have a perfect example, what I would love to say, I wanna thank you for bringing me in as an economic development officer, and your updates contain so many topics that I can't keep up with, I'm window skipping, and I can't believe this is only part time. I'm excited for Highlands, and the two months of marketing, I hope the stores can stand the cup, and I'm looking forward to the future updates, which include the two developer projects that you talked about, and I can't believe you have a backup, the other part, it's always going through, um, I'm worried this is gonna happen, it's not gonna happen in a long time. And I don't know about this last part, because you can only give such a great speech, but given the positive trajectory of Highlands over the last three years, in terms of your past knowledge of the issues in town, and steps being taken, so. I'm hoping that the council will consider reporting you to Carol Three Hounds Agency. I really hope you can, for asking, um, I really hope you'll accept the position, the absence of your knowledge on such important capital projects is gonna get lost for the council, they've registered, and also part of the town.
Hi, this is Michael Pennant, I'm sorry, I'm, um, I wanna thank everyone for all of your work, particularly, um, particularly with what many, they may wanna make one comment on, uh, whether we should, uh, it has to do with the elevation of our Seers Street, and, you know, the idea of building the ball pits, and not making them part of long-term options of blood system, um, where just adding a few more seats would provide protection to people, and that's what does where we want it out, I think that would be, you know, it's an opportunity that shouldn't be missed, even if it's only thirty feet or so long. Um, that said, most of the time, since the redevelopment, um, that I think it would be, I don't know, how is every run, is there a way when people build new private ball pits to set a minimum elevation, so that as work gets done, we're building resilience as everyone replaces their own pits? And I just wanted to throw that out there, I don't know how that could get, sorry.
Well, I believe that, certainly clients immediately and on tour, I actually have reached out, um, asking if they, uh, if, if, and developers are coming, I have to contact people, and who are, they recommend, but if there's something that you can do, uh, as a coordinator, whatever it might be, I go for a fair pitch, and actually, yeah, I think that, yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, I do believe that it would speed the height, it costs more a month, if you apply for that, and once you got a working worth, you can, you can, or, 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 or get a higher than you.
Which doesn't really make sense, right, you know, because they're a lot.
That was before the store.
Correct.
I don't want to do my goal, but I don't, but I don't speak pretty much more of it, having, I mean, so.
Okay, um, so, yeah, just anything that they could do with asset, I, I don't think that inconsistent with the army corps heights, or maybe some of the private developer would take on, but, um, yeah, just, uh, even if it's more consistent, uh, elevation rate, or something of that.
They want, they want.
Or.
I see, I see, just.
When you, they, I understand, and what it is right now is, we're moving the corner to my stuff a lot, so, really, I understand that, and I understand, and I do, I'm, I also think it's a good, um, a, a good example, so, the word, going forward, that, and the work that is coming, uh, contributing to resilience, would not definitely, the company would, and, and, and.
Can you speak up a little bit, please, the mic's hard to pick up.
Um, I wanted to ask first, um, um, the plan for the, I know you discussed, but the overall, um, where do you want to begin, is this still in the works, are we still looking at doing that, hoping for some of those, for some of those.
What is, uh, sat time, and so on, for, 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 like? It's, it's just, it's, it's someone who's working, reviving, getting the rest together, doing metering, probably, um, it could be Saturday, I think, well, that's it.
You're a good job.
The overall work with, and, 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 uh, my scope of work, those points, with, uh, the identity at this point, so as soon as they have come on my scope of work, um, then I'm able to present it to the plan council for consideration, for optimization, we'll cover it here, once that, um, once that moves ahead, we'll finalize the budget, and the reason that my scope of work is, is critical is, because we're looking forward back, considering the overall value that has, and we're, as a business overall, so, um, I want you guys to be able to find out, um.
It's gonna be a long year.
I'll probably, we're talking years, three years, four years, one ten years. I don't even know, but.
I'll see if you want to start work, you want to start work, uh, it's just gonna be high bank on when they, it could be as little as sixty, ninety days, or just like twenty days. Um, we, we are lucky where the D D stage is pushing for, um, we're doing the one with the other station, let's make an actual data harness, we've not been, uh, but, yeah, because we thought, and then all those, and also, we, we make water which pump stage, we have, um, more and more fun, the creation of water, which we're finding that, uh.
Sure, I'm just gonna do several investigations, I just, I'm, so, it's, that is, too, like, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I have a seven, fifty years, I mean, I don't forget a lot of stuff happening on New York, and, and just quite a lot, it's, so, we just discussed that, that one going in here, and we're right here for that, so, I think that's gonna cut down on a major portion of the funding, and we speak to you.
I hope. Next thing I should be addressing is, you did that, uh, Saxon's book, um, that the ownership, which kind of, we're, we're, uh, I think you don't know, uh, much. I think you don't know, Dan, you're much too sick, and how that's all working, you got progress, we're coming in, people could be a week without me, so get it, that, uh, for, for me, this place, I don't need to work on.
And then, what, how about the plan off, situation, have we made, have we made on the third, is it coming off, new situation? Always, you know, what you're saying.
Yes, I mean, we're still, um.